Welcome to The Buff Show. I am your co-host Brittany Walker and we are here today at the Seminole County School Board Meeting in Lake Mary, Florida. We're going to do some live interviews with some local activists who are standing up against the indefinite mask mandates. And we're also going to check out the meeting live and listen into some of the speeches being made by these activists. So, I can't wait to get started. Welcome back to The Buff Show. This is your co-host Brittany Walker and I'm here with one of our local activists. I'll let her introduce herself. What's your name?
Hi, my name is Isabel Sam.
Isabel, where are you from?
I'm from Orlando. I live just around the corner from Orlando.
Okay, very cool. And why are you here today?
I have friends of mine who asked me to just support their cause of letting their children be masked for in schools. I personally can't send my own children to school right now because of the masks. I used to work in clean rooms. I have been educated about all the different types of masks and clean clothing that you would wear to go into them. And I personally cannot put my own children at risk for bacterial infections by wearing masks.
Absolutely. Well, we on The Buff Show totally support this cause. We have been doing activism work and protests since the beginning of all this in July. So what do you think that outcome is going to be tonight?
Well, I'm hoping that the outcome will be that they will start to see the error of their ways, that these blanketed rules don't fit for every single human being. Every single human being is so completely unique that you can't just make one rule for everyone. And that's exactly where our country was bound to come from, is the idea that these rules don't work for all.
Exactly. And that's what we have to get back to. So, well, thank you so much Isabel for interviewing.
Thank you.
Welcome back to The Buff Show. This is your co-host Brittany Walker and I am here with another local activist who I happen to be Facebook friends with. So I will let him introduce himself.
Well, I think we both deleted Facebook now, so I don't know how we're friends now.
We're connected somehow.
We're connected somehow. My name is Drake Ward. It's a pleasure to be here with you, Brittany.
Yeah, it's good to see you. And so why are you here today?
I'm here as a concerned parent of Seminole County. I think the fear and the mental health that's going to be suppressing the generations of children through a permanent mask mandate is far worse than the virus. I think our reaction to the virus with the teachers' unions and everything, it just could have caused so many issues with the children of our community. I'm involved in this community. I coach in this community and it's a concern for me as a parent. And I think the politics of COVID need to be taken out of this.
Oh, absolutely. You know, that's a great point. That's something I was going to talk about in the meeting. Because when you're combining education with politics, it's not going to be a good outcome.
No.
So what do you think the outcome of tonight is going to be?
You know what, honestly Brittany, I wish I had a good answer. I do not know. But what I do know is that us making our voice heard will make an impact.
Absolutely.
It will make an impact into these elected officials. They're not doctors, they're not medical professionals. They are elected officials elected by us, we the people. So, in the Bible it says for us to pray for our leaders that we will be quiet and peaceful lives. Right now, we're not living peaceful lives in the country.
No, we're not.
There needs to be an impact made tonight. So they need to hear our voice, at the very least.
They do. And I'm really happy to see all of these media outlets here covering this. Because the more coverage we get, the more parents will be encouraged to stand up and speak out.
Absolutely. That's what these school board meetings are for.
Exactly. So thank you so much for interviewing.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me.
... my guards to what strategy I've been using. Since the beginning of this school year, I made out a strong station orientation model that I continue to use with my students. Very limited exceptions. All persons must wear a mask while one's in a classroom. Pursuant to Policy 8421, all persons are reminded that masks are required inside an education support center, and persons who refuse to wear masks may be removed from district property. I also remind all of the individuals in the board meeting that the school board has a policy regarding the forum and the appropriate behavior while within the meeting. There should not be heckling, yelling out, addressing individually the school board members or any of the employees. The public comments section of the meeting is to provide thoughts on education-related topics, topics on the agenda, and direct those comments to the board as a whole. Thank you Father God for giving us this moment in time, as I ask that we all come to this conversation with a reminder of what really matters: our children. Amen. First, I want to say thank you to all of our teachers and administrators. I so appreciate you and I think you are all wonderful. I'm here to name and implore you to use the science that has been shown to you to make a decision to end the Seminole County Public School indefinite mask mandate. Currently, children are forced to wear masks regardless of medical issues. The only option you have given our children with medical mask exemptions is ending actions coming from their primary doctor are to either go through mask training and isolation. Neither option are a positive mental outcome. These children want to learn a person that are being discriminated against, bullied, intentionally trained to wear a mask, peer pressured, or left at home or isolated. According to a study from the American Journal of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, there are now children and adolescents with higher rates of depression and anxiety resulting from this isolation. Suicide is up 1,000% this year. The mental health, as Abby pointed out earlier, is invisible, is not visible, but is being completely ignored. COVID-19 now has a vaccine with a 95% success rate, and children under the age of 18 have a 99.97% recovery. That means that sadly, 0.000003 children have been infected with COVID-19, have passed away. Three children is too many children in America to die, according to the CDC website. While influenza, whose vaccine on average only has a success rate of 40%, according to recent statistics from the federal government, has killed last year alone 188 children. Yes, 188 children. And remember, that is with the flu shot. We are being forced to live in fear and someone that would be in education, maybe you would hear a recommendation of destruction. Maybe you would hear, hey, I have something successful. The rate of success, though, is 0.000003%. You would lock them out of this building. If the change, the entire educational system was purposed for only three children, the entire United States would benefit. You would say that was idiotic. Kids go to school every year, day in and day out, as flu seasons come and flu seasons go. And dozens and dozens of children are dying from the flu. Yet we have parents who shoulder the risk of sending our children to school masked for a year in flu season. I am asking that you think of the long-term consequences of mask use seven hours a day to our children, the mental health of our children in Seminole County, which you have been voted in to protect and to represent. And yet, we have now been asked as parents to feel that we are not a part of the decision making. I pray and demand that you end the unconstitutional mask mandate. Please remember, the cure cannot be worse than the virus.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Michelle Weiss and I'm the mother of two children who attend school here in Seminole County. Jen just gave a ton of phenomenal facts and information and they are basically truths. They're not opinion pieces we're reading in the Wall Street Journal. They're not something that the media and the news is slamming down our throats 24/7. That's what I'm going to focus on tonight. Truths and facts, not emotions. Your vote for permanent mask mandate told us you make decisions based on emotions and fear and not facts. Not the facts that she just detailed. Being emotionally driven, quite honestly, I feel is why our country is struggling today. It's why you see such anger, young people burning down cities, eluding. They are living their lives based on emotions, not facts. And when we confuse these two things, we get two things: sloppy decision-making at best and dangerous actions at worst. And we are clearly seeing the danger and the declining mental health of our children, including mine, and our constitutional rights being taken away. Since school started, my daughter was one of the unfortunate students who was quarantined. Immediately took her for two tests, both for negative. And she was so excited when she found out because she thought she could go back to school. And had a real fun time trying to replace her, you don't have children, you're not going back. Through tears and screaming, she yelled about how stupid it was and unfair it was and that none of it makes sense. Because in our home, we teach children facts. We calculate often how many people in America have the virus and have died of the virus. Because of that, my children are not fearful. They know that knowledge is power. And by the way, the Americans today with COVID are 0.34% and the people today that have died having the virus, notice I didn't say of the virus, is 0.0007%. So in light of these facts, my children and I have many concerns about them being forced to wear masks. Yet Mr. Griffin, you were quoted as saying, "I've interacted with many parents. I've had zero concerns expressed to me." I wasn't masked. My friends were masked. And that was a kick in the gut to a lot of people that will not be able to be here today that have taken the time to write and to email and to express their concerns. I've been told that if I don't want my children to wear a mask, that I should keep them at home. Quite frankly, it's the exact opposite. If you don't want your kids to go to school because you think they're going to get COVID, keep them at home. More obvious is fear of going outside. Scared people don't go outside. And when they do, they don't make everyone else change their lives so that they can reduce their own fear. So when you vote next, vote on facts. Show us you believe that truth matters. Because I don't know what kind of generation we're going to be raising. We tell them to rely solely on how they feel. If you don't, we're not going to go away. We'll continue to fight, we'll write, we'll call, and we will remember your vote when it's time to divorce. Those are facts.
Hi, my name is Patrick Michael McGarrow, the senior partner here at Hall Scott McGarrow.
And I'm Jamie Hall Scott, managing partner at Hall Scott McGarrow.
We're here to welcome you to our website. And as you can see, we're not dressed in suits and ties. We're not standing in front of a bunch of law books because that really just wouldn't be our style.
No, no. We're just normal guys. And that's what this website's all about. For you to understand what we do, who we are, how we can help you with your appeals and post-conviction, but more importantly, to find out about us. Because at the end of the day, you're hiring an attorney based on who they are.
So thank you for stopping by. Please make sure to check out the other links in our website for valuable, valuable information, informative videos, and to learn a little bit more about us, click on our profiles.
Thanks for coming.
Good evening, School Board. Superintendent Walt Griffin, thank you for having us here this evening. I appreciate the time very much. I want to get right into it. I thank you for the positions that you're in and for the service that you're doing in our community. I pray for each and every Seminole County student who wanted me by name every morning as a man of faith. I pray for leaders and those in authority that women be required to live peaceful lives. But as a concerned father of three, our children not be living peaceful lives at the moment. Our kids in our county, our beautiful county Seminole, are not being harmed by the virus, but are being harmed by the reaction to the virus. The fear that's been created by the school board voting for a mandatory mask mandate has caused way more damage to the virus itself. Across the nation, studies have shown that anxiety, death rate, suicide, and depression have rose to insurmountable numbers. And that's caused by the fear that we place across the nation by forcing masks on our children. I'm calling on you to take the policies of COVID out of our schools. Children are at incredibly low risk of this virus. From the CDC statistics, as I mentioned earlier, for people less than 20 years old, they have a 99.997% of survival of this virus. COVID deaths in the U.S., for children, as I was stating earlier, are three. Compare that to auto accidents. Just this year already, there was over 675 traffic-related deaths of children. Drowning is a number. Children less than five years old have been over 350. Our children have the greatest of fatalities while driving to school or drowning in a pool during the summer. And let me restate it. Each and every single life is precious, born and unborn, and they are all created in the name of God. Three is way too many, but there is no reason to fear more of our children. The influence of last year killed over 188. They had a far greater risk than COVID-19. Have we ever required masking of healthy children during flu season? We haven't. We must stop unnecessarily fearing our children. Kids are not super spreaders. That is admitted and there is little to no evidence of that fact. Earlier this year, one of the members of this board, Abby Sanchez, received a valuable endorsement from the Des Moines Public Mayor Matt Morgan, who is a state commissioner. Matt Morgan has due for like Carissa, her parents, with a child with non-verbal autism and dementia. Eighty like hundreds and hundreds of kids in our county are denied medical assistance for wearing masks. I'm asking you to vote for the facts. I'm asking you to rescind your vote. I'm asking you for Seminole County to set the standard in Orlando area.
If we could, Madam Chairman, I would like to request a recess. It is against school board policy for you all to continue to disrupt the school board meeting. And I'd like to have an opportunity to provide that policy to you all and respectfully request that you comply with the formal requirements of the board. It is unlawful to disrupt a school board meeting. And so I want to provide that opportunity for you, to give you that information and to provide you with a warning so that we can continue to have this meeting. And you all have your opportunity to provide the information that you want to provide to the board in appropriate manner.
Are you saying that clapping your hands isn't legal?
Five minutes is up. Session, thank you. A five-minute recess. Please don't attempt anymore.
My name is Amanda Havelver and I'm here tonight as a concerned parent. This school board has overreached its authority. You've implemented one of the most aggressive mask policies in the state, including your decision to withhold a shrewd medical exemption for students with disabilities. You have denied the rights of parents, disregarded the recognition of our pediatricians, and implemented a one-size-fall mask mandate, driving students with disabilities out of the political system. Dr. Griffin, you reported to the media that you received zero complaints from parents on your mask policy and that...
Madam, let me comment on that right now. I actually spoke to Tina about this to share the message with you, but I guess you didn't get it. The response to my question that evening was how many students, parents, and teachers have approached me at school when I'm visiting schools about masks and how many have we asked to leave the board meeting? And my answer to that was zero. Just to get your facts. That was a snippet of the newspaper. I'm a news reporter, you should know that.
Then, I've been in communication with all of you for months about my son's inability to wear masks due to his diagnosed sensory processing disorder. And you assured me in writing that medical exemptions would be available. On July 1st, you wrote, quote, "I'm certain there will be a medical exemption. Rest assured, we want to do the right thing for all children." However, six days before school started, you revoked that medical exemption option. The week before school started, I was horrified by a call from a county nurse stating that medical exemptions are not available. Instead, she was calling for my consent for a four-week mask training program. This desensitization program would be administered by a teacher, not by my son's highly-trained, certified pediatric occupational therapist. The nurse explained that if my son failed this mask training program, he would be granted a face shield, have to sit behind plexiglass at his desk, not be able to participate in group activities, and not be allowed to come within six feet of his friends or his teacher. He would be socially isolated, stuck in a corner, and made to feel like an outcast. Imagine that for your kindergarten child with a developmental disability. You failed my son. The nurse tried to relieve my fears by saying, "Don't worry, we're going to kick him out the first week and peer pressure works well in situations like this." Thankfully for my son, we had the means to withdraw him from his public school immediately. And in both in the private school where masks are optional, children with special needs are treated with dignity and parental rights are respected. The school board has disregarded the rights of parents to make medical decisions for our children. And even worse, you turned your back on students with disabilities. You've made access to public education contingent on full and complete mask compliance without exception. Parents have had enough. We will defend our parental rights and fight for what's best for the health and safety of our children, both physically and emotionally. You need to rescind your mask mandate immediately. We are unifying, we're coordinating our efforts, and we will fight for our children.
What about jazz hands? Is that okay? Brittany, ask if jazz hands are okay. Jazz hands, ask if that's okay.
I think at some point or another, I voted for most of you guys on this day. And I did so believe in that you guys believed in limited government. I did so believe in that you guys recognized that our rights come from God and that your chief role, as we heard today, we knew that this morning, is to defend Florida's constitution and the constitution of the United States of America and to defend our rights and provide our children with a fair, quality, decent, good education to support our teachers, our professionals, and staff members. I will not question your love and dedication to our children. Absolutely not. I know you guys love my kids. I know you guys care for my children. I know you care for the Seminole County Public Schools, including Dr. Griffin. We've had numerous conversations with all of you guys. You guys assured me, and we've had numerous conversations, I think with everybody, that you were going to base your decisions based on facts, based on science. And the truth of the matter is COVID-19 has been politicized and I'm tired of it. I am tired of it. I am disgusted with it. All right? The science has been politicized, the advice from certain doctors have been politicized. I know if you're married to a physician, that's all. I have physicians, my children's doctors tell me they're scared to sign a notice or excuse because they feel they're going to lose their job because they're employed by a major practice. It's not a private or family-owned practice. Where are we going as a country? This is scary. This is scary. And I'm here just to pour my heart, and I believe you guys are going to listen to the right thing. Because you know, I moved from Jersey, right? Because I believed that Florida, Seminole County was the best place to raise my children, the best place to raise my family, that you guys believed in limited government. And what I'm seeing now, it freaks me out. It freaks my kids out. Dad, why do I have to stand before a gun? Why did I have to get my temperature every day? Why do I have to keep using my... Dad, you know what the kids do with the face masks in my class? And you know, it's just unscientific what we're doing. And we told you all before the school year started, I've said it, there will not be any super spreader events in Seminole County Public Schools because the science says it does not happen. Now, mind you, in March, we were at a place where it was fluid. The situation was fluid. I was down for the 15-day shutdown. I was down for the 30-day shutdown. After the 30-day, I was kind of like, oh no. You know, this is not smelling right. Right? There's a problem. And the truth of the matter is there is an element in our country that is taking advantage of this situation to create this new reset for whatever reason. I want no part of it. And I want Seminole County Public Schools to have no part of it. My kids have a right to a quality and decent education, free from these face masks all day. We have no scientific evidence as far as what are the long-term psychological damages of these kids wearing these face masks day in and day out. And I'm asking you tonight to do what I know you guys believe is right in your hearts. I know it. These mandates are wrong. We are not against face masks. I am not against face masks. I walk into a business, there's a sign that says, "Put a face mask on." I put it on. And if I don't like it, it's my job to vote your different business, okay? But now, when it comes to the public schools, I invite all of you guys to respect my rights to make medical decisions for my family. At times, they could be, and this is what I feel, we should cover up our children. I should cover myself up due to the family dynamic.
Please finish your thought.
I'll finish my thought with this. I humbly, I ask you all, we just lost three votes. I ask you all tonight, someone motion and say, you know, we're going to end the mandate. Let families make the best decision according to their personal situations and their health. I beg you, I ask you, let's do it. Let's make news for the right reason in Seminole County. Please make the right decision. Let's end the politicization of COVID-19 in Seminole County. Thank you. Please consider these words.
Hi, my name is Alicia and I have four children in my household at those two Seminole County Schools. We love our school, we love our teachers, and we love everything that they are doing to make this a successful year. I do not want my kids wearing masks in school 30 hours per week indefinitely. The school board has not provided clear benchmarks for our time. I believe that we can expect the mandate to be lifted. We deserve transparency and we need better communication from the school board. There is overwhelming scientific evidence that children, especially under 14-years-old, are far less likely to have symptoms of COVID-19 and even less likely to spread the virus in a teenager or adult. However, you implemented a one-size-fall mask mandate, expecting a 5-year-old or 10-year-old student to be helped sustain seven hours a day mask-wearing standard as an 18-year-old high school student. Your mask mandate does not follow the science and is damaging our children physically and emotionally. The science is clear about who is at most risk of having severe symptoms of COVID-19 and it is not school-aged children. School-aged children have a 99.997% survival rate. And in fact, it is also not teachers in Florida either. The average age of a teacher in Florida is 43.7 years old. So nearly all teachers in Florida have anywhere from a 99.6 to 99.98% survival rate from COVID-19. It is well documented that the median age of COVID-19 death is 84 years old. Despite the science, the school board has disregarded the rights of parents to make medical decisions for their children. You have made access to public education contingent on full and complete mask compliance. You have ignored the science and overreached your authority. I have heard story after story from desperate parents about the negative effects on their children from wearing masks all day. Complaints ranging from feeling disisolated and crushes, to trouble breathing, and inability to concentrate, and easily soothing symptoms of COVID-19 in anybody. Mask-wearing should be a school board recommendation. Share with parents that the science that is driving their mask policy. If the science is clear and compelling, then I'm sure parents will comply. Your current policy of forced compliance with zero transparency is alienating parents and destroying our trust in their decision-making ability. Parents have had enough. We will defend our parental rights and fight for what is best for the health and safety of our children, both physically and emotionally. I urge you to make mask-wearing in Seminole County Schools optional starting in 4 or 3. Parents are unifying. We are coordinating our efforts and we will fight for our children.
Havelver, three little boys that dressed in dust of Long Island. I am asking you today to reconsider the mask mandate in our public schools, to please consider the long-term negatives that mask-wearing would have on our precious children. In their formative and impressionable years, they are not learning the necessary non-verbal cues required to develop emotional intelligence because most non-verbal cues are hidden behind their masks. Beyond that, the only study done on the effectiveness of cloth masks, you can see the BMJ Open Access Journal Report by McIntyre. They reviewed, they studied the effectiveness of cloth masks as an alternative to viral masks for healthcare workers. They concluded that cloth masks were entirely inadequate protection against viruses and recommended that in the case of shortages of viral masks, that they be sanitized and reused instead of using cloth masks. Additionally, there are studies proving that masks, the kind that we're wearing, harbor and grow bacteria virus, harbor and grow bacteria viruses and we circulate them back to the wearer. Students are wearing these masks for eight hours a day. They're coughing in them, sneezing in them. They fall on the floor, they go back on their face. It's a peaches dish for viruses to fight to. They're more than just ineffective, they're harmful. Even the World Health Organization recommends that masks only be worn by those that are sick, not those that are healthy. We are asking that mask mandates be removed, I'm sorry, they're not asking that mask mandates be removed solely based on the principle of personal freedom. be removed solely based on the principle of personal freedom. We are asking that they be removed because they aren't effective and because they cause harm, physical, sorry, physiological and physical harm. These mask mandates are not based on all of the facts. I believe they are mostly based in fear. It is my hope that fear will not win today. Please end the mask mandate in our hearts.
And like others have mentioned, my husband and I moved here from Chicago to Seminole County because we research Seminole County schools, and so far, my kids have been getting an excellent education in Seminole County. And I wanted to thank the board for giving Seminole County parents four options when school started this fall. I was very appreciative of it as a parent. I do have two kids in Seminole County Schools, as I have mentioned. And when I was notified about kids going back to school and considering all my options as a parent, I read what the mask requirements were for my children because I was concerned about that, as well as being concerned about the virus and for everybody's health and safety. Back then, it was clearly communicated that they only had to wear masks during transportation times or transitioning times. But while sitting at their desks, they could take off their masks, they could take it off at recess, during P E. And as mom, I was fine with that. So I was fine with complying with that. Then, it seems that during the second week of school, my daughter told me she couldn't take her mask off at her desk. I would have multiple conversations with my daughter on a daily basis about when she had to wear her mask, and it didn't line up with what I was told by Seminole County Public Schools. Soon after the second week of school, my daughter got nosebleeds, and my son got a yellow scaly rash on his nose, and soon developed bronchitis. My son joined track and has to run a 6-minute, 40-second mile with the mask on outside. Why? Why a main switch? Apparently, the teachers were told the same thing at first about the masks, and the rules switched on them as well. I would like to understand the reason why sort of your mask-wearing is being implemented and the peer-reviewed side of science behind it. I too am a student, I went back to college later on in life, and with every single paper I write, I have to provide research and science sources. And I would only expect the same from the Board of Education, Seminole County Public School Boards, and the teachers as well. Also, why are you sending people to the classrooms to make sure kids are wearing a mask at their desks? Especially when a child has to wear a German-infested mask for six to eight hours a day, and that wasn't the original plan, on what parents and educators were told and sold on to go back to a brick-and-mortar school? I see the physical and psychological effects on my children, don't worry about the long-term physical and psychological effects on them. What I am asking the Seminole County Public School Board is to reconsider their mask mandates and allow kids, parents, and teachers to decide for themselves. If you won't give parents, kids, and educators a choice in wearing a mask, then go back to the original plan and die in July. Thank you so much for having me.
We have organized, in conjunction with for Freedom Peepers and other activist groups locally, to come out and be a voice for children against the indefinite mask mandate that were passed by Seminole County, not that long ago actually, against the knowledge of the general public. So we are here today to be a voice for those people.